I'd like to call and order the 1,448th meeting of the President and Board of Trustees for Majestic Park on this seventh day of May, 2018. Please rise for our invocation being given this evening by Reverend Wayne Hoff from Gateway Community Church, and please remain standing by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Jake Schmidt.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given to us. We thank you for our country and all the freedoms that we have in it, and we pray tonight for your men and women who are serving abroad, protecting us and our freedoms. We pray that you will put your hand of protection on them tonight and bless them. We pray that you will be with these leaders tonight as they are making decisions for us. We pray that you will lead, guide, and direct, and give them the wisdom to discern. We love you tonight. We pray your richest blessing upon everyone here, and in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God, and human as well, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please take a roll call?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Sykes.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
We have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 16th Board Meeting. So made. Second. The motion is second. Is there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes have been approved. Next, we'll have the Treasurer's Report from Michelle Johansson, Finance and HR Manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Treasurer's Report as of May 1st, 2018 reflected the total of all funds to be $10, 749,882.39. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report. So made. Second. The motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Treasurer's Report has been approved. Next, we have Communications from Clerk Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Several things this evening. First of all, we have a proclamation for International Municipal Clerks Week. Mayor Johnson will be presenting the proclamation to Clerk Lori Mitchell, and reading the proclamation will be Trustee Aaron Wilson.
Whereas the office of municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants, and whereas the office of municipal clerk provides the professional link between citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels, and whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all, and whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs and professional organizations, and whereas it is important to appropriate that they recognize the accomplishments of the office of municipal clerk. Now therefore, on behalf of the Village of Majesney Park, we hereby proclaim this week, May 6th through 12th of 2018, as Municipal Clerks Week in Majesney Park, and further extend appreciation to Lori Mitchell, our municipal clerk, for the vital services she performs and her exemplary dedication to the Village of Majesney Park and its residents.
Thank you, Your Honor. Also this evening, we are recognizing Motorcycle Awareness Month, and is there a representative from Abate here this evening? In the absence of someone from Abate, Trustee Beck will not only read the proclamation, but he's going to accept it as well.
Whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness, and whereas motorcycles are a common and economical means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption, road wear, and contributes to significant way to relieve of traffic and parking congestion, and whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of the village and state be aware of motorcycles on roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety, and whereas the members of Abate of Illinois, a brotherhood aimed toward education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs, and to the general public in our village and state, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over 120,000 participants in Illinois in the past five years. And whereas all motorcyclists should join Abate, Illinois Incorporated, in actively promoting the safety operation of motorcycles, as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, and awareness to the citizens of the village and state, and whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensively, extensive volunteerism and money to national community and charitable organizations, and whereas during the month of May, all roadway users should unite in the safe sharing of roadways within the Village of Majesney Park and throughout the great state of Illinois. Now therefore, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, Village of Majesney, Steve Johnson hereby proclaims the month of May, 2018, as Motorcycle Awareness Month in the Village of Majesney Park, and urge all motors to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness on roadways.
Also this evening, we're very pleased to have with us Nathan Bryant and Jim Zeke Kevorn from R A D C, who will give the annual update for their organization to the board.
Good evening, everybody. Great to see everybody again this year. I passed out a couple of different things. The first thing is a USB port. On that, you'll find the documentation that's in front of you, as well as some additional marketing materials that we've been using to promote the region, within the region and outside of the region. So it pops open, you put that into your computer with the little kind of gold pieces facing upward. First time I used it, I was like, where does this go? So anyways, the folders that are in front of you have all of our updated information. You have our updated Board of Directors, updated list of investors, our annual report that was just released last month, that is digital online as well. You'll have the Quick Reference Guide, which is data that represents the region at an MSA level, so that's Boone and Winnebago County. You'll have some updated information in there, as well as on some of our current newsletters. So first and foremost, of course, the Rockford Area Economic Development Council, our Board of Directors, and our staff and all investors thank the Village of Majesney Park for our continued partnership. We absolutely are extremely grateful for you working with us, day in and day out. We get to work with James and Tim, and absolutely grateful to work with all of you and celebrate the continued growth of this region. Mayor Johnson has our Letter of Gratitude and our Letter requesting continued partnership and support of our organization for consideration for 2018. So I thank you, and with that, I'm going to have Nathan talk a little bit more on the details of his day-to-day work on projects and the growth within the region and working with Jim and Tim, James and Tim. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Jim. James.
Well, good evening. I'm Nathan Bryant. I'm President and CEO of the Rockford Area Economic Development Council. But before I get going, I wanted to spend a minute and thank you. Before this, I spent a career in front of municipalities, getting projects approved as a developer and as an engineer, all throughout Wisconsin and Illinois, and no one shows up to a meeting to tell you what a great job you're doing. So from me to you, I know your job is very difficult as elected officials, and from me to you, thank you for the great work that you are doing. I know it's difficult. So I do have the pleasure of working with both James and Tim on a daily basis, and our market is in the midst of some very good attractions on opportunities here that we are working on together. And a big part of how that attraction opportunity comes together, in addition to working with great municipal partners like we have here tonight, that offer all the things that any given company is looking for, but at the end of the day, the big conversation for all of us as a region and as a market is about our workforce. It's about the availability of it, it's about the talent, and it's about what we're going to do to ensure a company's security on their employment today, tomorrow, and in the future. One very large attraction that we're currently in the midst of, and Majesney Park is currently in the midst of, is related to a very large project, a half million square foot facility, somewhat automotive, it's automotive tied, not tied directly to Chrysler, and we are an outright attraction, and we're working with in the market. Inside of that overall conversation, three of their 10 pages that they had submitted for us to review are all about workforce, reliability of it, when it's coming, and what can we have in the future to the extent that we're going to make an investment of this size in your region and in your community. I'm proud to say that in that conversation, pardon me, and we are already narrowed down to three states total and four regions, the greater Rockford region being one, I'm proud to say that we're finishing first in that overall workforce conversation, and it's not just about what our companies currently do, but it's about how we're leaning forward in our progress as we support workforce, and I'm proud to say that our region has been in this business for well over 10 years. And it comes in ways that are things like alignment Rockford, which are aligning public school systems together with industry. It comes in our investment in our mechanical engineering program with NIU and RVC, in which our community raised almost $7.5 million in support of that program. This mechanical engineering program, the value proposition for this, for our children and for our folks in the region is, for $40,000, you can get your mechanical engineering degree right here in Rockford on RVC's campus, and you can walk away with an NIU degree. You're guaranteed two things as you go through that process. You're guaranteed the interview for a paid internship somewhere between your sophomore and junior year, and you're interviewed to guarantee with one of our mechanical engineering companies, or companies that need mechanical engineers, like aerospace, when you graduate. So the value proposition for us is extraordinary. When we are selling to a global economy, it are those pieces that resonate, right? No one pulls out a pen and starts writing down that we've got TIF districts, and we've got great municipalities, and all those things are expected, and thank God that we have those here, just like we have with our partnership with Majesney Park. But when it comes to how we are marketing, how we're gaining an edge, it's on workforce. And that was noted, most noted, early this quarter, when our market was noted as the fourth-best manufacturing community in the nation. Wrapped up in that conversation was workforce, availability of it, cost of living, and a number of other factors that rolled up into being, you know, the fourth-best manufacturing community in the United States. It's something that we need to be proud of, and wrapped up inside that conversation, the biggest part about it is workforce. We can go on and on and on. Beyond that, mechanical engineers, when our community needed more RNs, we built an enhanced registered nursing program that's right there on RVC's campus to support the $1.5 billion worth of investment that our hospital systems are making in the next five years. And when we needed to attract AAR, we built, our community built, and put an AMP mechanics training facility right next to those hangars. Yes, we leveraged a lot for the hangars, and yes, we leveraged a lot for the opportunity to get AAR here, but without the workforce, without guaranteeing that opportunity for them, it wouldn't have happened. So I guess my point being is that we've got to celebrate a lot of these great things that are going on inside of our community, and one of those is where we're finishing, and these are overall conversations inside of workforce. When it comes to Majesney Park, we've seen a lot of great opportunities foster over the last six, seven, eight months. We're in and amongst a lot of good opportunities for manufacturing, to support manufacturing companies in and around throughout Majesney Park. Last year, Jerry and I and Jim Zeke visited over 130 companies, boots on the ground directly. Some of those companies that you have right here, they're doing exceptional work, are companies like Parker Henneffin, ITW Shake Proof. You can see that inside of a lot of the great work that they're here. These are global companies making decisions on whether or not they're going to locate certain books of business in our community. And being able to get out and touch those companies and figure out how to support them is imperative, because it's those companies that are going to drive more growth faster when they're making global decisions on where they're going to put product lines than anything else that we might do for attracting companies. So if I were encouraging us as a community to do anything, it would be to make sure that we spend time with those companies that are currently here, above and beyond the work that we always do for attraction of companies. And you have some exceptional companies, just to name a few, that reside right here in Majesney Park. So very much thank you and appreciate you, and I would welcome any questions that you might have. I'm here and would be happy to field any questions.
I just have a comment if I may.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We have a case in point. Our village treasurer, 21-year-old kid, young man, who is very much in the workforce, and he was a graduate of Harlem High School and went into the program with NIU, going to college, working at Woodward, all at the same time, and now he's our village treasurer. So there's a lot of nights that you'll see him not here at these meetings, and that's because he is in class, and he is doing exactly what you just spoke on, making our workforce very proud.
Thank you. A key message point of this is, we need to be able to tell our young folks that they do not necessarily need to go out and move somewhere else to have an exceptional career, because it resides right here, in support of the mechanical engineering program. Just to give you a few tidbits, we've got 90 companies inside of Winnebago County that are directly tied to aerospace. That's why the mechanical engineering program. We have over 250 companies within a 90-mile radius up here, all tied to aerospace in one way or another, and the largest source of employment that they need are mechanical engineers. So it's a good opportunity for us. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you for the comment.
We're proud of you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Trustee Beck.
Well, you alluded to the fact that workforce in Illinois is very good, and I'm here to tell you it are, because I've ran large crews all over Pennsylvania, New England, Indiana, Michigan, and I'll put, in the construction industry, man for man, woman for woman, the people that work right here in northern Illinois against anybody.
Absolutely. You know, we hear that often with companies who have a presence elsewhere in the country. They have a presence in the south, southeast, they have a presence on the east coast, west coast. Midwest mentality of work ethic is drastically different than other parts of the country, and we happen to have a bountiful supply of that right here in Rockford, greater Rockford area.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Love to keep moving forward with Majesney Park. We've had a great role together, and I'm pretty doggone sure in the next several months we're going to see some activity that's coming out of the work that we're doing together, so thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next, we have the warrant. Trustee Aaron Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Administration and Finance Committee met this evening, and we had a warrant totaling $562,246.67. I'd like to make a motion for their approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Schmidt.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Bills have been approved. Next on the agenda is administrative reports. The last few weeks have been very busy for myself. I met with the Rockford Area Realtors Young Professional Network to discuss the 2018 Park Project. I attended the 47th Annual Young A Heart Festival Button Ceremony at Harlem High School. The winner, the winning design this year was made by Katie Watcher, a junior at Harlem High School. Lust Park Mayor Greg Jury, Platinum Sponsor Ike Tricky, and representatives from Easter Seals all attended the ceremony. A big thank you goes to Tricky Enterprises, for this is the 10th year of being the major sponsor of the Young A Heart. The community's support and generosity is greatly appreciated by all. My wife and I attended the Fireman's, the Firefighters, First Responders Appreciation Dinner held at VFW in Lust Park. It was a very well-attended event. I'm very excited that the newest business to announce that they are coming to Majesney Park is Hobby Lobby. They'll be opening up in the fall in the former Gorman's space located at 173. They plan to create 35 to 50 new jobs for this area, and it'll be the second location in the state line area. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the following names to serve on the ad hoc committee to receive, to review our current police service contract, and to explore other alternatives that we may have available to us for police services. First would be Trustee Eric Beck, Trustee Joe Sykes, Village Administrator Tim Savage, Mayor Steve Johnson, John Foltz, Steve Blackmer, Greg Scalise, and Brent Nelson. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please? Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Kidd.
I just want to make sure, was there an interview process? How was the name selected? And if there was an interview process, how did you come to these names?
Individuals basically came up to myself, and you did express enters, but it was after we had so many people come in, overwhelming numbers, and went to, you know, help, and everybody has their own little aspect of what they can really help with, like Steve Blackmer, he's a former fire.
I understand that. I was just asking if there was a formal interview process.
Not a formal, no.
With, no. Thank you.
Okay. I would just like to clarify, my intent was that the administrator's position be an ex officio member and non-voting, certainly a part of the committee, but ex officio, and then that makes for an even seven, if you will.
Yep.
For voting purposes, and we have a seven-member voting committee. Thank you. Can we modify the motion to identify administrators?
Right.
That's okay with the motion, your honor, in a second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, will the clerk please take a roll call?
Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Appointments of these individuals have been approved to serve on the ad hoc committee to explore police services at the village. This time, I'm placing the following trustee names in for nomination of the committee appointments for 2018. A and F Committee Chairman, Trustee Joe Sykes, Vice Chairman, Trustee Aaron Wilson, and Trustee Terry Bailey. Planning and Economic Development Committee's Chairman, Trustee Terry Bailey, Vice Chair, Chairman, Trustee Eric Beck, and Trustee Jake Schmidt. Public Improvement and Safety Committee Chairman, Trustee Jake Schmidt, Vice Chairman, Trustee James Kidd, and Trustee Joe Sykes. And Liquor Commissioner, Liquor Commissioner will be Mayor Steve Johnson, Trustee Eric Beck, Trustee James Kidd, and Trustee Aaron Wilson. And the Board will be asked to approve the following appointments on the May 21st Board Meeting. Continuing on with other administrative reports, does the attorney have a report this evening?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Village Administrator Tim Savage, do you have a report this evening?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Thank you. Finance and Human Resource Manager, Michelle Johansson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Included with your Board packet was the Quarterly Investment Report as of May 2nd, as required by the Village's investment policy. Total interest earned over the past quarter was $20,782, slightly lower than the prior quarter, but we've had some larger payouts in the last couple months, so lower balances. The federal interest rate continues to rise month over month, and I'm in monthly contact with our banks to stay on par with the increasing rates. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to go over them, otherwise that is all. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is Community Development Director, James Richter.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you may have seen the recent press release, Hobby Lobby will be occupying the former Gorman's this year. We are currently reviewing their plans for build-out, and there will be an improvement to the front facade that will have new windows and some face brick and obviously their signage, so they plan to be open this fall, and we look forward to welcoming them. Ross Dress for Less recently submitted their plans for build-out of the interior of the new store at Majesney Crossings. As part of the deal, a significant amount of landlord work was done over the past six months, and basically creating a vanilla box for Ross Dress, so we just got their plans under review, and they should be open in July. That's their projected opening. They didn't give us an exact date, but by the end of July, they'd like to be open. As you've also heard, Target is undergoing a complete interior renovation. There'll be some exterior painting upgrades and some, a little bit of a facelift, nothing significant. They will add a Starbucks at that location. And so the grouping of metal containers you see out, the storage containers you see out in the parking lot there, that's for that project and for Hobby Lobby, so it's good to see lots of construction going on here. The Harlem Roscoe Fire Department has been posting change of occupancy notices on any of the vacant properties or spaces, just to remind anyone who might be occupying the space that, hey, you need to check with us, you need to check with the village before you come in and go ahead and occupy, because either the sprinkler system or the exits may not be up to code. So we appreciate them doing that. That's something that they chose to do themselves. We're talking to North Park Fire also to follow suit and do the same program. So if anybody asks you what this was, or if anybody in your district has a building and they've seen this, this is commercial buildings only, not residential. And then finally, the village back in March sent letters to, advisory letters to residents in River Keys, just kind of advising them of the changes to the 2016 FEMA flood rate insurance rate maps, and how that could potentially affect any future improvements they want to make on their properties. The letter was purely advisory. It was intended to let residents know that we're here to help them. We've had some recent projects and some calls that came from those letters saying, hey, I want to put a deck in, hey, I'd like to put a patio in, is this telling me I can't do that? We're not telling people in this letter, and there's nothing in the letter that says you can't do it. It just says, if you're planning to do it, let us help you figure out how you can do it. So if you encounter any calls from anyone, just please advise them to speak to Karen Houston or myself, and we'll do our best to help them navigate the process to get approval. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to personally thank James for his hard work of getting Hobby Lobby to sign on board. Thank you again. Next is Superintendent of Public Works, Chad Hunter.
No report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next would be Village Engineer, Chris Stopkins.
No report this evening. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next would be Stuart Leaz and Tamara Hicott.
Thank you. Girls' varsity track got second at conference behind Belvedere North, and the JV got first. The boys will be having their conference this Thursday, and our sectionals is also Thursday. AP testing has begun today and will continue throughout the next two weeks, and graduation is May 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Committee and Trustee Reports. Does any trustee have a report this evening? Trustee Kidd?
I just have four comments. Couple people have been calling me about several issues. Number one, the TLC, Senior Home Construction. We've noticed that there hasn't been a lot of movement. I was wondering, can somebody give me a heads up on what's going on so I can report that back to the citizens?
I haven't seen any movement at all. The project is underway. It's still in the planned drafting stage. They're working on foundation plans and underground plans. They've got a couple permits into both the Reclamation District and North Park Water. They're waiting for final comments back on those, the under grounds.
Thank you. Question number two, I think it's important, or statement, that Guy Williams Park, that we find some type of solution for the citizens that live in that area, for the noise, ordinance, the guns, the firecrackers. I've talked to several people. Some people said video cameras, somebody said engineering a walk bridge from somewhere, just so we can get people there or watch what's happening. So just some advice, or suggestions. Number three, the racing at the mall Matt Ashman was talking about, when he called me, I called Tim, and I agree with him, maybe some police and fire should have been there because if a car was to roll, there was not an ambulance on site or a fire truck to put out a fire or something were to catch fire. Where they were drifting, it was about 300 feet from the property of, what's the store that's there?
Big Lots?
The Big Lots, yes. Big Lots was the first store, and one kid or one family were watching right at Big Latch was the first store, and one kid or one family were watching right at the cones. So we should be more safety-conscious about that. And thirdly, about the police contract, I would encourage everybody to read all information. Ask the village administrator, the village attorney to read it before the meeting last week. Tim, village attorney, Mayor Johnson, they asked me to vote yes on this issue, and I told them I couldn't, out of good conscience, because I had not received the information on reading the contract. So please read, do your due diligence, question, and be educated. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wilson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to say that we were able to attend the Keep Northern Illinois Beautiful luncheon and learned a lot about food sustainability. It was an honor to be there, and I know that a lot of village staff and some of the trustees and the mayor, of course, were there, also along with our village clerk, Lori Mitchell. Great time had by all. Also, I want to thank all the folks that came out to Special Olympics on Saturday at Harlem High School in Majesny Park. A big thanks to Lieutenant Delprat and his staff for all the parking and finagling the hundreds and thousands of people that came out for that event. It was a beautiful day for weather and a great day for our Special Olympians, and a big thanks, too, to trustee Sykes for being there with us on Saturday as well. And coming up in a few weekends, it's Vets Roll, and I'll be going along with the vets as an assistant this year, so looking forward to that, and that leads right into Memorial Day weekend. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Planning and Economic Development Committee met and approved one ordinance for a variation of setback for private residential property, which will go to the board on the 21st. And also, I'd like to take off on what Aaron said about the Vets Roll. The third Thursday of the month that the Metamart Shopping Center is the Gentleman's Car Club fundraiser for Vets Roll. I remember a few years ago, we raised enough funds in that particular year that we pretty close filled one bus. So it's our big fundraiser, so I hope everybody in the village comes down, look at some nice little cars, and take part in the 50/50 and help us raise some funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next would be Consent Agenda. Would the staff present all items to be considered on the consent agenda?
Thank you. We have Item A, Resolution 20R18. It authorizes the village engineer to publicly bid the reconstruction of Orlando, Mitchell, Scott, Cadet, and Juniper. Item B, Resolution 21R18, authorizes engineering services for the 2018 road resurfacing program. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any items the trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to consider Hearing none, the consent agenda has been accepted as presented. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Second. Your motion is second? Will the clerk please take roll call?
Trustee Kid.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Bailey.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Sykes.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Mayor Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Consent agenda has been approved. Next would be unfinished business having none. Next would be new business having none. Next would be public comment. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board for the good of the village? Hearing none. Next would be adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So made.
Second.
Your motion is second?